What we will believe would be a preliminary budget. It'll still be tentative right up until we adopt it, if I'm not mistaken. This is gonna, so, you're shaking your head. So, when we give a preliminary budget at the October meeting, right?
That's the preliminary, they can't be changed.
That's correct. But until that time, we can change it, that's what I'm saying. If we're gonna meet again one more time before that.
Still got two, two weeks.
Yeah, we got a couple of weeks.
Yeah, each, sure, we can meet one more time quickly, five minutes.
Yeah, it'd be one issue only.
Sure.
And then decide what we're on to do on it. So. Is that good now with everyone? Go with you, especially us?
Yes.
You know. And I did this in your best interest, so that.
I realize that, I've seen it.
Alright, I just wanted to make sure you.
Yeah, yes.
Tend to that, we will do. Are we all on the same page, sixty-three thousand eight oh eight, correct?
Sixty-three thousand eight oh eight.
Alright. That brings us to rec.
Nope.
Oh, nope, I lied. Um, sidewalks. Sidewalks. I have put together. And I don't wanna put this into the budget till after, so that I know where we are in the two percent. I put together a list of, I'm gonna call them capital improvement projects. And I spent the greater part of the day on this. And also on the phone with a couple of people to make sure we were doing this right. As I stated throughout the year, our unallocated fund reserves are getting up there. And it's time to start using some of that money. So, I had put in for ten thousand dollars for the publicity and the general fund. The publicity fee. And I would like to keep the sidewalks at twenty-five. Because I know there are sidewalk issues up in Scotty Falls. And I know there are sidewalk issues in Lexington. And I would like to be able to rectify some of that. And again, um, we may need to hire a third, I hate to do it. And I'm hoping we can hire next year our own help. But we may need to hire a third party to go through and cut back the sod on the sidewalks. And reedge them and get the sidewalks at least up to park. I was hoping to do that with actually two, two people we're gonna hire this year. So, with the board's permission, I would like to keep the sidewalk seating at twenty-five thousand for the upcoming year. And I used the ten thousand that we're gonna use for that. Under that premise of the parade that's going to come up in the winter festival and the music in the park. Use the take ten thousand out of the unallocated fund reserve and move it over for that. I won't say the board on that.
Okay.
I hate to rob Paul to pay Pete in other words, you know. Mike, I don't know if you've got most of that, but basically I'd like to put, keep the sidewalks at twenty-five thousand and just use the unallocated fund reserve to transfer money over, which will not affect the general budget, the general tax.
Yeah, we got.
As long as we're moving it from.
You're using.
Our savings account money, so to speak.
Using the unallocated for.
The ten grand for that, instead of using this.
What were you using it for?
We're gonna use it for the one hundred and seventy-fifth anniversary parade and the winter festival and the music in the park. Yeah, I'm hoping that covers most of that. I'm gonna try to get some people to donate to these events also. We've been pretty good with donations from stewards and stuff like that for coffee and cider and, you know, donuts and stuff like that for the festival. We do have to pay for this, the sleigh ride or wagon ride, depending on if there's snow or not. They do have a sleigh, we haven't got enough snow. If you're all good with that, both, if I don't want to speak for them, both Howard and Reg, just go with that if you are.
Yep.
Okay. So we keep that at twenty-five. That brings us to the rec.
Nope, still got one more before that.
Oh, eleven thousand.
Programs for aging.
Okay, I already had that written in there and not even a.
I had, I sort of have a report on it, Kevin.
Go ahead.
You asked me. I spoke to the administrator of that program, Howard you mentioned, Maria. And what she's suggesting, because we don't have a lot of room at this campus here to have meetings really, is that they have a new program where they drop meals off to people. So they just come and pick them up and they're three dollars per meal.
Is that like the Meals on Wheels?
It's a little different than that, it's called Grab and Go, the program.
Oh, I've heard of that.
You have, okay, so, anyway, that's one program. And then another program is where a senior fifty-five or older could get a card to attend all the activities that they have. In one year at a twenty dollars a person. So, simply in terms of money, I've never really asked for any money for anything, but I will.
Well, you have, we all have at different times, but yeah.
I'd like to get six thousand dollars in this, in this budget, under programs for the aging.
Did you check and see, like I asked, were you able to get a hold and see what they had in that account already?
Uh, no, I wasn't. Because quite honestly, I'm not sure really who is, there's a check but floating around out there somewhere. And I don't really know, I've gotta be honest about it.
Is it Phyllis?
I thought we said Phyllis, yeah, last night, Phyllis Rock.
Phyllis Rock, or Phyllis Gutt.
Phyllis Rock, she said Rock.
Yeah.
That's what I think too.
So we just simply incorporate those funds, probably in a.
You would have to, it's all part of that same program.
Right. But if we, if we could get six thousand and try to take off with this program in twenty-three, obviously if we didn't spend the money, it'd be bad.
You're looking at a total of six thousand.
Total of six.
And we don't know what they have in the account, so we don't know what to add to it. That's, that's where I'm going there, that's why I wanted to know what they have in there. And roughly, you girls have been around a while. How many people were in utilizing that?
I'd say about a dozen.
About twelve to fifteen maybe? So, let's, let's go with fifteen. You said that.
If you go with twenty, at twenty dollars a head, that's four hundred bucks.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out right now, was, I was gonna go fifteen, but if we can go with twenty.
And this would give them access to the Clinton, the county?
And then you said three dollars is, nah, three dollars and something a day, you say?
Uh, three dollars per meal.
So they could go, do they do three meals or do they do one meal?
No, one meal, one meal. But the woman running it is Debbie Alexander, I have her phone number and I was gonna call her. But I wanted to get the approval first of the board, but I will call her and.
We don't need approval to, to call and get information from the board.
Well, I will do that.
Because you're on that committee, so you're.
Of course, I spoke to Vern this morning right off on it.
Yep.
And he's all for it.
Where would they pick these meals up?
Uh, hopefully right here. At this building. From, I believe noon to whenever, that would be workable.
Can I ask, do you know how they even order them or how many, they know how many to drop off or?
That'll be, that'll be an issue to build a list of people who might partake in this.
There's just some logistics in that.
There is.
To figure it out and then how much we would need.
Yeah, do they send somebody up here to distribute them?
They do, they do, yes.
Where would we be distributing them? We have a J C O in there.
I know, I know that, I know.
Yeah, you're running in there.
Well, the thing of it is too, is you gotta remember that if they're noon to whenever, what he said, gotta keep them hot, you gotta keep them cold.
Well, I imagine they would do that, right?
I believe they would.
Responsible for them.
Don't complicate this for me.
First of all, you gotta be. Your project, kiddo.
You'd have to be fifty-five years of older.
Yes.
In order to do it.
I'm gonna get to eat.
There you go. I'm fifty-seven, I don't buy a lunch anymore, that's awesome.
Is that every day they put a meal out?
I believe that is. But is there any chance that we could hire a coordinator of this program? Maybe for, maybe a thousand a year to do it, is that possible?
We can do that, we might as well do like Peru and hire a secretary to the lieutenant.
That's all.
And then they can do like Lieutenant Peru, does it take care of the website and the whole works? What, what's theirs make, fifty-three thousand a year?
What I mean, to get the list out to notify people.
And she takes care of music in the park, I wouldn't have to do that anymore.
Yeah, that's a challenge here, is to notify everyone. Once you get them coming down here, they'll do it.
Just like J C O, they didn't.
The same thing.
Well, why wouldn't J C O, why wouldn't you talk to J C O and see if they could coordinate with something like that?
She suggested that, Donna, actually.
Cause I think you're, Debbie Alexander, if I'm not mistaken, used to be an outreach coordinator when I used to do the food program here.
You're right, she was. Yeah, she was, that's very good idea.
Oh, no, she's not here every day, but.
I could still see the twenty dollars a person for the county. Cause they got a lot of activities.
Yeah, and you're looking at four hundred bucks, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
It's not a question of us appropriating the money, I think we're all on board with that. It's just, we need to know how much, so that we're not pushing more out there than we need to to go over. We're, we're gonna try to stay within the two percent, even though we, we did pass the cap. What's gonna put us over the two percent is these capital projects. But we're, we're creeping in on getting close to that. We can go over, I just want the board to realize that we're trying to, we're trying to appropriate enough money, but not more than what we need. And if we're just gonna throw out a figure of, you know, ten thousand like we did last night, or six thousand like you did tonight, and we're not able to know what it's gonna cost, or if that's more than what we need, I'd just like to have a figure, you know what I mean, based upon some fact. We know how much that's gonna be and I'm, I think it's worthwhile, the seniors definitely. I know people's father, my father-in-law gets the Meals on Wheels. He's ninety-one, he doesn't.
But they deliver.
We don't want them cooking right now, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, but don't they deliver to the house?
They do.
They don't have to come down, that's, that's the other concern I have, is how many of the seniors are gonna be able to come down here and get it.
Yeah, it's monetary based, the Meals on Wheels, so they have to be within that income level to get that service.
I agree with Reggie, we gotta do something for our seniors and get them going. Um, I'm wondering if we should go like thirty-five hundred this year, just to see if we can get things going.
And that's where knowing what they have in their account would be really nice.
Yeah. You know.
And then we'd build a budget for it on factual basis, so it, again, like you say. If we're only looking at four hundred bucks to get them, and we've never had.
If we only have twenty people, but maybe, maybe we'll end up with a hundred people.
And if that happens, then we can increase it in the twenty-twenty-four budget.
Well, what I'm thinking is if we go up to thirty-five and then if they got money they can put in there, cause that money isn't gonna be going in next year. So that will give us a realistic figure for the board, for the budget to work off of. At thirty-five, then we know if we can figure out for this year to next year as to are we low or are we high?
Am I, am I correct in thinking that they have not taken a draw in the last couple of years?
No, and that's why we haven't gotten.
Yeah, see, cause it'd be easy to figure if we'd say, okay, we've been giving them, you know, X amount of dollars for the last several years, we could kinda guesstimate what they have in that. But if they haven't taken a draw in the last couple of years, we have no idea what they have.
Right, and if this money goes in, somebody has to be in charge of that account and do a financial report every year.
Okay.
So.
They usually meet, when they meet here, they maybe once a month, they used to do it, but not in the winter usually, right? And because they don't like to drive in the winter. But they used to, maybe, like I remember, they would plan on going to a movie.
Yeah.
Or, and they would, or out to Butcher Block for dinner or something like that.
And I, I spoke to a couple different, not to mention their names, a couple different, uh, bus people, let's just call them that, or van people that will come and provide that service for the town. I'm sure it's gonna be a couple hundred bucks to have them pick them up and deliver them and then pick them back up and they use this as a central, you know what I mean, the automobile, what have you. So, I don't think you're out of line with the thirty-five hundred and increasing it by twenty-five hundred bucks, because that's what we usually put in there is a thousand each year, right?
Seventeen.
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 Yeah.
So are we going with thirty-five?
Yep, seventeen, I crossed out the other one, that's the one below it.
That was what I guess.
And once this, you know, Mike, you go and I hope it would, they'll be billing us by voucher every month. So we're keeping track of.
Then we'd have an average.
Right, okay, so they just send a bill up here and a voucher, we pay it. So we're keeping track of things.
So this money's not going in their checking account then, because they have their separate checking account.
I would say that whatever that checking account is, that was still a, a town account under the. But it, but wasn't that established as part of the, the town, we grant them.
No, we just fund, we just fund their account, but.
I know they had their own bylaws and their own officers and all that.
The cap has nothing to do with the town.
But if we're, if they're not gonna continue with that program and it's taxpayers' money, it would stand reason for me, and I'm not a lawyer, that that money would go back into that account if they abolish what they're doing now.
I would think so if they abolished it.
You're saying like a donation? The towns, you say funding?
Yeah, we give them.
Yeah, we fund and they have to supply.
Donation isn't the same thing.
They had to supply.
It was like a senior.
It's a positive, right?
It's not a donate, it's a support.
Yeah.
Town supports the.
Cause donation, you're not, you're not positive a lot, but it's the support is, it's a positive.
Yeah, they took out for the money, but.
So it's a good point, there could be funds left in there.
That's what I'm saying.
Hopefully, there are.
So if you wanna increase that.
And they might not want this either.
Right, I have no idea.
The lady and, because they might feel upset that someone's trying to, you know, go in there.
Yeah. I think the problem they had was setting up their, the first problem was the COVID nationally, they didn't wanna meet at all. And then the second one was by the time they were able to meet, some of their officers weren't able to perform those duties and a couple of them, and one of them I believe was.
Richard, maybe you'd be getting involved with this program, volunteer.
No. No.
You didn't even take.
Love it, that's. Come on, that's community service.
You didn't even think about it.
How about you, Mike?
I'm not as old as you guys. You're over fifty-five, right? Just, just barely.
Yeah, right. But anyway, Vern Bruno is up to date and he's on the committee.
So roughly we'd be, uh, change would be eighteen hundred dollars? Is that what everybody else came up with? And what would that be for an increase?
One oh five point nine percent.
One oh six.
Hundred and six percent, we'll call it, okay.
So that's the scary part about that, we're only increasing that seventeen hundred, but it's a hundred and six percent increase.
No, people have to be.
You gotta look at what's.
Realistic and look at. And it's just that a lot of our stuff is really small. And if you give it any amount of money, it's gonna be, uh, show as a large percentage. But I don't think it's unreasonable. So is the board good with that hundred and six percent and giving them thirty-five hundred bucks? If they're willing to accept it? Yes? A little more on that one?
Now, do we want them to accept it, or do we wanna try to set up that board right through the town?
Right, but we can still do this on, on a, we can try. We can't make them go, but we can try to set out at least, um, I'll let Reg continue on that, because he is part of that, him and Vern. If you wanna find out how many, I'm sure they got an average already of what towns are utilizing that service, especially with the food. And how many of them used the twenty dollar annual, um, is it a membership fee or something? Is that what, how they, they do it? So if you can get us kind of some of that back and then you can work your way through the logistics of it. And then report back just to the board.
Sure, of course.
Things going forward.
You know, something else I just think too, even though that's open to fifty-five, I think we should check to see what our group's bylaws says for their age. Is it sixty-two, is it fifty-five, is it sixty? Because if we're gonna send something out, trying to get people to do this, even though that's open to fifty-five, we should keep it within their bylaws, if they say that their group is sixty and up, we just send it out to them. People that are only sixty.
And that, I agree with you, Howard, a lot of this stems upon Reg and Vern being able to make contact.
Yeah, right.
And speak with them and then get their input on what they would like. And I mean, this part is pretty much what you guys wanna make of it. Once you bring it back to the board, I don't see anybody's gonna vote against something like what we're talking about, so. Once you get that information back, cause this could end up being a standalone program, totally separate from what they've been doing, you know what I mean?
Okay.
But it would, it would be nice to have it all incorporated into one, if they're willing to do that.
Of course.
All of that up to you and them.
Alright, thanks.
Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
Alright. Supportive program for senior citizens.
Probably, probably still scared of the COVID. My God.
Boy, there's a lot of people wearing masks again.
I got, I got one man right now.
So we're good, that, from program of the aging, let's go to, look at parks. So the one I had, uh, I have two there actually, cause Sam has a revised on his A seven one four zero point one. Uh, Howard, do we know the other night, did that look like it went down from the twenty-twenty-two budget? That was typo on his, he would like to see that at twenty thousand five hundred. So if you wanna do the percentage on that.
I'm sorry, how much was it?
Twenty thousand five hundred.
Five hundred.
Instead of sixteen thousand?
Yeah, versus sixteen, it was nineteen eight fifty last year.
Three point three.
Three point three? Is everybody good with that one?
Yeah, how much was the increase of?
Three point three.
No, the amount.
The amount.
It was twenty, twenty-five thousand?
Twenty thousand five hundred. Twenty thousand five hundred.
Two oh five hundred.
Yeah, two zero comma five hundred. Which is the three point three.
What's the other one, increase?
That one's for the summer kids.
But I mean, how much is that in dollars?
Six hundred and fifty.
Sixty-nine fifty?
Six hundred and fifty, over last year.
Yeah.
Sam, you're beginning workers, what are they starting at now?
Minimum wage.
Right now it's thirteen twenty and I think.
Going to fourteen twenty.
Oh, it's going up a dollar?
That's what I seen.
Yeah. That's what I got when I.
And they want it fifteen twenty by twenty twenty-four.
Then add a dollar an hour.
They want the minimum wage fifteen dollars or higher. The county wants theirs at twenty dollars or higher.
Wow.
Um, if it's a dollar an hour that we're gonna be going up to because of the minimum wage, how many hours did we have?
Yeah, I don't think that's enough.
So I was just wondering.
What I, what I budgeted was, normally they get here middle of May and they leave middle of August, so it's a twelve week period. And I budgeted forty hours per employee for that twelve week period. And it came out to twenty thousand four hundred and forty-eight dollars, something like that.
Yeah, and you did go up to, in the maintenance, when you went up to, you went up in the maintenance one too, cause you're paid out of the two line items, so, yeah, you went up in both, you'd be going up in both of them.
Right.
So I think you'd be okay.
Okay. Now, is that the only one that you had to change? Because I see too that the contractual.
No, P S.
Yeah, just the playground P S. But the contractual, you're gonna go down still?
On a, uh, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, because that was money from a grant that we're not getting again and, so.
And the youth program P S, you're okay with?
Youth program P S at the.
No, because that's where your salary comes in and that's where we're coming back from.
Well, there's three salaries under that, so.
Right.
Let me, do you wanna explain, Sam?
What's that?
Do you wanna explain that it's the line item that they're talking about?
With that line item, the seventy-three ten point one, that includes my salary, the coaches, and that was a portion of the buildings, grounds money that was paid to Danny or whomever filled that position. That's what's inclusive in that particular line item.
Danny got paid from two different line items?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, yeah. So the, what are the other two?
It's his salary.
No, I mean.
Building grounds, huh?
The ones below that, ten two, ten four.
The two hundred is equipment and uniforms. And then the four hundred is the contractual expense.
If your contractual is like your shock and your paint and your softballs.
We have to go by and all the other good things.
That covers the other programs too, from the C E P H programs and. It's all in there.
Alright, so what do you gotta go to on that, the one hundred?
So, on the one hundred, Sam did some homework. It's another day. I want to look through those, Plattsburg, they break theirs up, he's got it pretty detailed here. Recreation director is at sixty-nine one, it looks like.
They actually have two people to fill the position that I have. They have the recreation director and then the program director, they're separate.
Fifty-three on our.
They do work together on all other stuff. Building, their buildings and grounds department takes care of their fields for them as far as mowing and lining. You know, they have a lot more programs than we do. But we run some of our programs with them. Certain things that we go in, such as there's the STEM chemistry program that we did this year, the kayaking. We were trying to do the footsaw program this year, but due to our computer, or I should say our website issues, we weren't able to get that going. And then we also do a golf thing with them.
We do bowling in the winter too, right?
But we do bowling in the winter, we do that together as well, so. So, no, that, the twenty-twenty-two salary and then they know what they're going for the twenty-twenty-three. Town of Beagman Town, I estimated three percent, but then the supervisor secretary got back to me this afternoon. and said that they are not doing their meetings till next week, so they don't know what percentage, uh, if any, they will be going over. And at Town of Beadman Town, every individual goes in individually with the board and, uh, does their own thing. But, uh, they also at Beadman Town have the recreation director, and they have the youth commission, which is heavily involved with them. That helps, uh, organize and run some of their programs. Dave Manning, who's the person out there, does a little of the physical work. He, uh, does some lining of the fields, but the majority of it is the buildings and grounds people. Town of Peru, let's see...
Going back to that, Sam, you don't have any amount for the youth commission, though?
Uh, to my knowledge, they're not paid, and they didn't tell me that.
Okay.
So I, I honestly forgot that. So, uh, we don't have a youth commission. Town of Peru, the twenty-twenty-four salary, uh, and they also have an assistant recreation or, uh, yes, assistant recreation director, and, uh...
This is the twenty-twenty-two, you mean, not twenty-twenty?
He said twenty.
In twenty-twenty-two, they had a, they have an assistant, and they will have that assistant in twenty-twenty-three.
Okay.
Uh, that person actually is going to take over as the new recreation director has recently. And then they will appoint another assistant recreation director for next year. They also have a commu-, uh, youth commission who is involved in setting their programs and things that they do. One of the things that, that, uh, most of us have to do is we have to do our own budget. At Town of Peru, uh, John had a little bit to do with the budget, and he only did a portion of the county reports that are required, uh, for the year. Buildings and grounds did some of their work, uh, but John also had summer help that worked for him. And, uh, so he got paid a stipend of twenty-five-hundred dollars, uh, to oversee those two workers to, uh... Along with his salary to, uh, take care of the buildings and grounds.
That would be plus on top of that salary?
Uh, no, his salary was actually twenty-two-three-eighty-nine, so...
That's what brought it up to twenty-four-eighty...
Twenty-four-eighty-eighty-nine.
Okay.
And next year, it's gonna go to twenty-five-five-sixty, uh, with that twenty-five-hundred involved in it. Town of Saranac, they have one person, and her salary is thirteen-thousand dollars. They have a pool, so she's in charge of hiring the swimming instructors for that and any of the lifeguards. She oversees the programs like I do. And we have a shared services agreement, so Town of Saranac charges, uh, people outside the Town of Saranac for swimming lessons. Uh, but our kids who sign up do not have to pay, because I send our girls, or our workers, up there for one day, and they go up and they line out the, uh, and mark out, starting with just the corner pins, the soccer fields for the beginning of the year for, for, uh, Jackie at Town of Saranac, so she waives a fee for our kids to swim. And then she does a little bit of the work, but the majority of it is done by buildings and grounds once the fields are laid out. And then Champlain-Rouse's Point is kind of a unique thing. Town of Champlain has a recreation director, and her salary is fifty-seven-seventy-five. Her only job is to, um, do the budget for her one program, which is, uh, baseball and softball. It's the only thing that she has to do. The Village of Rouse's Point has a rec leader. Her salary is thirty-five-hundred-and-twenty-five, and she has no responsibilities other than running the, uh... Oh, excuse me. Town of, the Town of Champlain person runs their soccer program. The Town of, or the Village of Rouse's Point person runs the soccer program. And the rec leader for the Village of Champlain runs their basketball program. And, uh, the only one that has to do any county reports is the, uh, recreation director for the Town of Champlain. And, uh, that one person does some of their, uh, work outside, but, uh, the other two do not. And the only thing that, uh, is different from any one of them, basically, what I do is, is, uh... Jordan at Town of Plattsburg, uh, she is involved in looking for grants, uh, which is something I have not done in the past. But other than that, the things that they do are what I do.
But you do apply for the county money that we approve for.
Right, right. I have to put in, you have to do a...
That's kinda like...
You have to do a request that to be, at the end of the year, to get the money. You do an application at the year to get the money, and you have to also do the report for, uh... To collect the money. So there's three different reports at different times of the year for the county. It has to be done, you know, along with, uh, the budgeting. Some of these people do parts of the budget, some, some of them don't do any. So Town of Saranac, she has no, she does not do a budget whatsoever.
So where does that lead us under the one-hundred? How are we sitting with that figure that you gave us of forty-three-five?
Well, there's multiple things in that line that include that.
The main one you're looking at is Sam's.
Right. The increase was eight-thousand-nine-four-three overall, if I'm not mistaken, right?
Yeah, Sam's asking from, going from eleven-oh-five-seven to eighteen.
How long you been working there, Sam?
January first, nineteen-eighty-four.
Where'd you start out at?
What's that?
Do you remember how much you started out at?
Oh, God, no. It's probably buried in the archives somewhere. Up on the sand road.
Oh, yeah, huh? Yeah. They went there long ago.
That was when they were doing the fishing machine.
You never had a raise other than a three-percent raise or whatever it is?
Uh, no. Back in the early years, I don't remember if they did three percents or anything.
No, I know, uh, Barb said the same thing with the historians. They weren't included in there.
Some of them weren't even included.
It was like a quarter a year or fifty cents a year.
Yeah. So you can grab it here if you want. Go through the column.
Looked good on TV last night.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And it's all fallacy that adds like ten pounds to you when you're on TV.
That'd be six to ground.
I think you think then.
Basically, what? What was the difference?
Sixty-nine-four-three.
Yep.
You said fifty-nine-four-three?
Sixty-nine.
Sixty-nine-four-three. Sixty-nine.
So that's gonna go from forty-three-five to sixty-nine-four-three? Is that right?
What's that?
That's the difference in the increase. Oh, sixty-nine-four-three, okay.
Yeah, from the eleven to the eighteen. And I'm kinda looking like we did for everything else, comparatively speaking.
Okay.
You know, the Beadman Town, roughly, we don't know yet totally, because they, they call them in one at a time, like you said. But they were at sixteen-eight-four last year. Plattsburg's way above everybody else's normal. Not that they don't do a lot.
So the proposal is parallel to what we're doing in highway?
I think so.
In a sense, huh?
It, it's pretty parallel to what I'm seeing. I mean, Saranac is low compared to that. Uh, Peru is five grand almost higher, right? There is five grand, over five grand higher. At twenty-four-thousand-eighty-nine.
Is that two people?
He needs asking. Well, they got a, uh, separate, uh, rec director that made two thousand on top of that. If I'm reading that right, right, Sam?
Correct.
That's above and beyond. That, that would be, have to be added as part of the rec department, where he doesn't have that. You'd actually have to add that two thousand into the twenty-four-eighty-nine.
Peru's total next year for the two would be twenty-eight-five.
There you go. That's what I'm saying, you'd have to add those two together. So I don't think he's, he's asking for much more than bringing him up with where everybody else is.
So are you gonna be able to stay at the forty-three-five?
If you left it the way it is, that's basically what his increase would be, you know, sixty-nine-four-two at the forty-three-five. Now, you're not asking for more than that, right?
No.
The only thing I would say is that it's handled in the same way. I would, I would, I would take the, the overall increase is not gonna change. But I would definitely make sure that you took the three percent off of that and separated it to right-size that salary, and then give the three percent to equal that sixty-nine-four-three.
The overall's four-point-nine, the whole budget.
Yeah, because there's several line, no, several different things that go into that line. But based on just the salary aspect, like we did with the rest of them.
How much is the B and G part of that position?
I'm sorry?
How much is the B and G part of that position?
The what?
Building grounds.
Buildings and grounds, part of that one-hundred.
Um, sixteen.
Fifteen?
Sixteen.
Sixteen?
Sixteen.
Well, that's not buildings and grounds, that's Sam, or that was Danny's.
Yeah.
But not the buildings and grounds, not...
No, no.
No, he's got two lines there.
Yeah.
For what he does to help with the rec stuff.
Right.
Or did. He won't go with us. So are we all agreeable to that line, the way it stands?
Yeah.
Where would it end up if we stayed exactly with highway? Where would that final figure be?
At a five percent?
I mean, it's kind of parallel, really is, but...
Well, I've been here since nineteen-eighty-three also.
Yeah, we're not comparing, I know that, I don't take anything away from either one. You've been there.
I know, I see Jeff.
You're longer than I...
Don't use five percent.
No, no.
I'm not trying to make that...
No, the only thing I'm saying is that we're looking at bringing the salaries concurrent to what the other towns are paying.
Eleven-six-nine.
Whether it's superintendent or whether it's rec.
A hundred thousand.
And, and we're way, way under what the rest of them are paying.
She hasn't got any raises.
No.
So, you know...
It does need to be right-sized.
I mean, come on.
It needs to be, and not, not to mention that he, he does a plow.
No, he does.
You know what I'm saying? He does stuff that these people don't even have on their list. Or they got extra people hired to do it.
Eleven-six-nine, eleven-six-ten.
For more than thirty years?
On eleven-thousand-fifty-seven?
Yeah, it's only like six-hundred dollars.
Well, what do we do? Would be, uh...
Sam, it is ten-thousand-seven-thirty-five.
Correct.
Right now, correct? Okay.
That's... Danny's been doing two jobs. And hopefully, he doesn't continue to have to do two jobs. But I'm just saying, what he's doing, we're still saving money. And how save that money? And that's, there, there lies the problem again. These salaries are so low that if you give anything to them, it's a large percentage increase.
It's already in there, though, right?
That one's already in there.
So it's twenty-five percent?
Yep.
Twenty-six?
Yeah, inclusive of everything.
And the other three, the whole?
Yeah, the other...
Yeah, that's everything, though.
Yeah, that's it.
How come it's not listed separately?
For the budget purposes, you don't have to list it separately, but when I put it in the computer, you list them all separately, because you don't have to break down, because it's, it's point-one-hundred, point-one-twenty, point-one-forty. You don't have to list them separately. Otherwise, you're doing a million transfers all your own, and they have like a...
But on the controller's book, it's under those numbers.
Yeah, you don't have to break down the four-ten.
Like when we get audited, that's what they look at, those, those, I should call them, you know, those line items. And make sure that what the deductions out of that line are acceptable under what the guidance of the controller's office says you can use. It's like, I, line items for...
Nineteen-eighty-four, the line items were a legal page.
Yeah. Yeah. I, I'm good with it, too. I tell you, James, I don't, I don't think there's anybody that can sit here and say that he's not underpaid for what he does. And looking at the other towns, I think he's right, but that would bring in more alignment for the other salaries. He's still gonna be under, uh, the ones that are closest to us.
Sam?
I'm looking at the right one, right? You're looking for eighteen?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanna make sure I'm looking at the right one.
So are we good with that one?
Mm-hmm. Do we finish up with the historian last night?
Yeah. And I did get some knowledge incorporated into me, and I had a minimal moment last night, because she did have me broken down on here. Uh, there was just so much there, I was looking at it so quick, I did not see where she broke it down, but she enlightened me today. So on the historian, basically, she was looking for, uh, four-thousand-four-hundred-and-ninety-two dollars increase to that budget, or to go to. The historian's, her pay is three-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars. The assistant's pay is nine-hundred-and-nineteen dollars. So it's about roughly, oh, three-to-one, right?
Mm-hmm.
Looking at it. Twenty-twenty-three, um, to keep everything in alignment, like I said, and keep the raises, again, the same, two percent, if we're gonna do that. Her salary for twenty-twenty-three would go to, from thirty-three-five, not, thirty-three-thousand-three-hundred-and-fifty-nine dollars to three-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-six. And the assistant would go from nine-hundred-and-nineteen dollars to nine-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars and ninety-five cents. The... If you want me to break that down, the two-percent rate would be the rate of the base salary increases. So that would be thirty-four, uh, three-thousand-four-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars, and respectively, nine-thirty-seven for her assistant. So that would be thirty-four, uh, three thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars and respectively nine thirty-seven for her assistant. And then the two percent that everybody was supposed to be taking would bring it back up to the three thousand five twenty. And then nine hundred and sixty-four for the assistant. Brings it right back to the top. It doesn't change the numbers. And we're still looking at an increase of two hundred and fourteen bucks. That's what she's basically asking for, two hundred and fourteen bucks. After all that. And I'll stand on my statement I said last night, she does a lot more than her historian job. And she's gonna be doing a lot more with, um, working on the hundred and seventy-fifth trade and festivities for that. So, two hundred and fourteen bucks I think is well spent. Anybody not concur with that? Or concur with it?
I'm good.
Yeah.
So that one, there's good. I think that was all on that page, is that all you have?
No, it's only.
Oh, go ahead.
Well, you probably know, I think that's, we pay that position too much money and I would like to propose a decrease in that position as well as the safety. We saw our thirty-six thousand on those positions at this point. I think that's too much money considering what you get paid, but everyone else gets paid, it's the highest paying job here. And it's a part-time job as well.
I'd like to propose that we pick up the position back at the original, still it's at the twenty twenty-five right now, or twenty twenty-two budget price for an assistant.
We're gonna resolve this first, alright?
Well, we take the, we take the zoning P S and put that into an assistant.
Why are you guys thinking about an assistant for somebody that works four hours a week here?
If you put in an assistant.
He works more than four hours, yeah.
Here, office.
My thinking on that is if you hire an assistant now, or at the first of the year, you're gonna have time to work because it's about eighteen month process to get certified.
Yeah.
You have to be careful.
I don't know if this is the right place to bring it out, but demands will.